...of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, you all. Welcome. I'd just personally welcome our new board members, Rachel, Amy, Harley, don't know if it was ever formally announced, and also Manuela, Rocco, Ms. Chleski, Ms. Cooper, Mr. Hawley, here, Mr. Giannelli, here, Mr. Johnston, here, Mr. Carrap, here, Mr. Matrina, here, Ms. Molinaro, here, Mr. Santos, here, Ms. Fileno, here, Mrs. Palamas. Am I pronouncing her right?
Paul Maris.
Paul Maris, Ms. Paul Maris.
Here.
Well, accounted and registered. Recognitions, there are none. Public participation. The Board welcomes public participations and asks that all speakers please limit their comments to three minutes. This will be strictly enforced, three minutes. Speakers may offer objective comments of school operations and programs that concern them. The Board will not permit any expression of personal complaints, defamatory comments about the Board of Education personnel and students, or against any person connected with the Danbury Public School System. With that being said, the first speaker is Mr. Fred Carrap.
Good evening, everyone. I just wanted to make a formal statement on behalf of the Democratic Caucus on the Danbury Board of Education, the statements to the public and our fellow Board of Education members. On November 7th, 2017, Danbury voters elected four Democrats to serve on the Board of Education. It is a great concern that on Tuesday, January 9th, the day before a regular meeting of the Board of Education, the Mayor of Danbury usurped the authority of the Board and undermined the will of Danbury electors by appointing a Republican to fill Democratic vacancy. Let it be known that the Democratic Caucus of the Board of Education does not officially recognize the Mayor's authority to take this action. As such, we are in the process of exploring legal remedies to rectify this unprecedented action and restore the will of voters. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Gene Arquest.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening to the honorable members of the Board and issue well as you engage in your endeavors here as members of the Board of Education. Our Mayor by making the appointment to fill the vacancy on the Board of Education, a recent vacancy on the Board of Education, has circumvented the will of voters of Danbury and perhaps the laws of the State Committee. The laws of the State of Connecticut determine the appointments to vacant Board of Education positions. Specifically, Connecticut General Statute Section 10-219 requires the remaining Board of Education members to fill the vacancy. The statute does not permit this to be done by any municipal body or other elected officer, nor may the Board of Education or its members advocate your statutory obligations to fill the vacancy by calling upon the Mayor to do so. The Board of Education, after all, is constituted by state statute and not by a municipality. I am aware of the court case involving the City of Richwood in 2016 known as Herrera versus DeGannon, a ruling that is under appeal. If this case, if this case, or for this case, to be a predicate for the Mayor to make such an appointment here in Danbury, it's ill-advised at best. The City of Richwood Charter is very different than the City of Danbury's Charter, which happens to be silent on matters such as this. Nonetheless, how and whether this matter is resolved by a court of law generally determined, but the Court of Public Opinion ultimately will judge the manner of the vacancy was filled. It has been a decades-old practice of the Board of Education in our city to fill vacancies with a person of the same political party of which the vacancy occurred. On November 7th, 2017, voters elected four Democrats to serve on the Board of three to four-year positions in one full term. One of the four-year candidates was nominated in July 2017 prior to accepting the position with the Danbury Public Schools as a certified behavioral therapist in October 2017, and was not aware that she would not be able to hold both elections of positions at the election. Furthermore, we were not made aware of her hiring until the Thursday after the election. Understandably, as a wife, mother, and homeowner, she opted to retain her professional position with the Board versus accepting the volunteer position on the Board that she was duly elected to fill. To fill this vacancy with a Republican member created by a Democratic vacancy not only breaks the bipartisan precedent that has existed within this body for so many years, but also is an affront to democracy and defies the clear will of voters of Danbury who elected a Democrat to the seat. Thank you for your service and for providing me the opportunity to discuss this.
Thank you. Mr. Robert Tarasak.
I'm going to echo what Mayor said. I found nothing in the city charter and all that gives the Mayor the power to do what he did. I believe everything I've read is up to the Board of Education to live with the problem and to solve the problem. Okay, I know it's not easy. Okay, we have sort of still, but still it's the responsibility of the Board of Education from there, as much as I can read, but I'll be honest, I'm a lawyer, so that's another thing. But the one thing is, I didn't fill a vacancy. I know if anyone remembered, but I served for two terms and then I ran for office and lost, and then somebody moved, and I went through the normal procedure. Okay? The Democratic Party made a recommendation, there were some other candidates, and the Board of Education, and took it as a major decision that I could follow for two years. And so the precedent has been, from my personal knowledge, been carried for some time and right through something personally. After all this is said, though, I feel worried, the fact that around the elections for Board offices and around the time of elections, the Board becomes most political, and of course, we're set up as an independent agency, yet in my mind, and I think most of the Board's minds, to work for the best interest of all the students of Danbury. And I remember, I just been here today, and I'm looking for all about what? All about kids. I must have seen that a few hundred times. So I'm just pleading to all the Board members, no matter what happens on all this thing, I can do though, you know, I have a position I believe in, that when this is over, forget the politics, remember it's all about kids.
Thank you. Ken Kooper.
Much of what I was going to say, I'm Ken Docter, I live in Peyton, Rhode. Much of what I was going to say has already been said, so I'll try not to repeat that. But what is upsetting is the fact that, you know, many years ago, when I stood up in other various boards, and I think, you know, Pat Johnson was one of them, who used to see me many times in part of the zoning board, there was a feeling on the boards that it wasn't about politics, it was about being a Danbarian. And that was spoken over and over and over again, because many of the issues that we would speak on had to do with quality of life, that issues in Danbury that affect everybody, regardless of politics, regardless of any other personal nature. That being said, to watch what happened here is truly upsetting, you know, after knowing and hearing for so long how the Board of Ed is a non-political organization, that you work together for the betterment of the students of our school system to assure that our children get a good education and get the supplies and the things that they need, this kind of goes around that. You know, the people of Danbury spoke in the last election, you know, they elected a Democrat to that seat, and it's unfortunate this Board couldn't fill that spot. I don't know what the lager had was, but it then became all about politics and not about what I have heard from other boards about being a Danbarian, about being what is best for the city. And it's unfortunate. Now, the Democratic Party did put together, did offer a very viable candidate to fill that seat, somebody who has experience in this town, who has children in the school system, who is energetic, who gets things done, who has a real positive, and is overlooked, absolutely overlooked, and it's not speaking to the will of the people who spoke on November. You know, it's unfortunate that we're here and rather spend our time dealing with
One minute, please.
dealing with getting school books and things of that sort, but here we find ourselves. So it's unfortunate, and it seems like it's being done for political basis, and I really wish that this Board would go back to say, some of the other boards that I've been in front of, and not be about the politics, and be about doing what's best for Danbury. Thank you.
Will Love.
Much of what I have to say is already stated. This past November, I ran for City Council as a Democrat. I know that we all worked very hard for the votes that we get and the seats that we won, and I feel that the City of Danbury wanted change in the Board of Ed, it's been Republican control for a very long time, and they elected four Democrats because they want to change. Our students don't feel safe because of things that are happening with ICE and immigration issues, and the group that I am part of, Danbury Area Justice Network, we've also been working to appeal to the Board to get some security for our students, and the people of Danbury voted to have a Democratic majority because they weren't getting what they wanted out of the Board, when it was Republican control. And this isn't something that should have happened. The Mayor overset this balance, he shouldn't have done the appointment, and, you know, the people spoke, and they want some change, and this isn't the way to bring it up. Thank you.
Thank you. Kate Coretta. Nate Coretta, correct?
You're right. Kate Coretta.
Thank you.
All right. I've spoken here a couple of times before, actually, on the very issue that Will was just talking about, and I appreciate the opportunity to speak again with you tonight. I'm here to express concern over and opposition to the Board of Ed appointment by Mayor Barton. I'm here as a concerned citizen, I'm here as a parent, I'm here as somebody who cares deeply about the messages that we impart to our children, and I know all of you feel the same way. My concern is this, when the city had the election, they decisively elected four Democrats to this Board. It's my understanding that vacancies are supposed to be appointed by the Board or the Board Chairman, but typically upon the recommendation of the party which holds that seat. So I was pretty stunned when I saw posts on Facebook yesterday about this appointment by the Mayor, who decided to inject himself in the process without any precedent for doing so, and then opted to appoint an individual from the opposition party. I'm even more stunned, though, to be honest, at the silence on this topic. What we're sitting here discussing this evening is the spirit of fairness. What does that mean? What are we showing our kids with our behavior? Where's the effort to cultivate an environment of respect? A place where whether we like each other or not, whether we agree about the same things, we at least agree to the same rules and to hold ourselves accountable to those rules. This is an opportunity here to teach our kids a valuable lesson, something that I think is an important part of Danbury, the kind of place I want Danbury to be, the kind of behavior I want for my own kids. As the leadership for the school, you guys have a lot of responsibility. You're nurturing and protecting our kids and trying to see them through a pretty hectic It's also your job to be a model for them, to show them who we can be as diligent citizens who want the best for our kids. I know there are a lot of other people who feel the way that I do, that couldn't be here tonight or didn't feel comfortable speaking about it, but I hope that you will challenge this decision. I hope you will come together and recognize that this does not honor the spirit of what happened in the election. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Martha Rhodes.
She's a tough act to follow. My name is Martha Rhodes, I live in Danbury, I've been here for over forty years. I come from a long line of educators, mothers, aunts, sisters, cousins, all dyed-in-the-wool dedicated public teachers. I happen to be married to, married to a man for forty-one years, who's completing his fiftieth year as a public school educator. So I'm pretty darn sure I know what teachers are all about. What they care about, quality education, sufficient funding for books and supplies, fair and market-appropriate salaries, among many other things, and for whom they work, the children and families of the city in which those families work and pay taxes. I also happen to know what teachers are not about, which is politics. And this travesty of what's supposed to be a free and fair election, of members to the Danbury Board of Education is exactly that, politics as usual. Promoted and executed by a Mayor whose reelection slogan is equally a travesty, people over politics. The people elected a Democrat to take the seat that has now been literally gifted to a Republican. The people deserve more than a candidate whose promise to the students and taxpayers of Danbury is essentially a rubber stamp of the Danbury Board of Education's continued I urge you to consider the ramifications of blindly accepting a member who is representing what should be considered an abuse of power by Mayor Barton, whose intention, ironically, is to become Governor of Connecticut. How can he be perceived as fair, valued at the state level when he has taken such unfair and some say unlawful steps to rectify a situation that has always been remedied by the popular vote? Thank you for your opportunity, the opportunity to speak before you all, and thank you all for your good work.
Julie Kushner.
I'm Julie Kushner, and I live on Old Ridgeberry Road, and I have three children who went through the Danbury schools, and so I have a great appreciation for the public education that they received. I think that Danbury is a great city, and I think we have good schools, but I think they could be better. And I think that's what happened in this last election. I think people voted for change. And one of the things that was so clear was that the change that they voted for was in the Board of Education. So it's stunning to me that the appointment was made yesterday of a Republican member who had run for office and had failed to achieve that. And this isn't at all personal to you, Ms. Paul Maris, because I think you could be a lovely person. It's not about you at all. It's really about the principle that others have spoken about tonight. It's about the idea that when people vote for change, that has to be respected. I've only been to this Board once before, and that was last year, when I was very concerned that that was happening, with the fear in the school of some of our students who are not documented. And we appealed to the Board to take real strong measures to reassure these students that they were in a safe environment, and that they wouldn't be separated from their parents because they decided to go to school. And there were many, many speakers that night, and we really wanted to be heard, and what I'm disappointed in is that no change was made. There were further discussions, but no change was made. The steps that we asked for were not taken. And so, you know, that was one of the things that motivated me to vote for change. And I think there are other issues as well. I don't feel that the schools are living up to the potential that we have here in Danbury, and that's a concern to me. When I hear that there aren't enough textbooks for kids, that's a problem. We want to be invested in our education, we want our kids to have the best possible education. And I know that there's a lot to balance here, but the bottom line is that the voters decided it was time to change the Board of Ed majority, and I think it's time for you all to recognize that needs to be respected, and Mayor Barton needs to respect that. So I urge you, as the other speakers have, to take action here and to recognize that this isn't a just or equitable way to proceed. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Siti Almeida.
My name is Siti Almeida, and thank you for letting me speak. I've been a resident of Danbury for twenty-one years now. I have two sons, both from the Danbury Public Schools. My oldest son, Dean, is at Danbury High School, he went to Broadview prior to today, he's at Pembroke, where I was a member of ETO. My youngest son, Vincent, has gone very early. And the reason I'm here, really, is because I'm kind of angry and ashamed, to be honest, to what's going on here, the blatant partisan games that are being played on this Board, which should be a non-partisan Board. You should all be here with my son's best interests in mind, not playing political games, and what's going on here is political games. Democrat won the election, Democrat should be seated. Instead, the Mayor was running a campaign for governor, appointed a Republican, someone who just got married to a state representative who might not even live in Danbury, should not be on this Board. And, you know, it's not right. You should be ashamed of what's going on, you should be looking out for our kids, not for the Mayor, not for your political party. Thank you.
Thank you. James Root.
Hello, James Root, Danbury resident, thanks for the opportunity to speak, I'll be very brief. I cannot accept the action I had tonight to elect new officers. I would request, for what it's worth, that that be delayed, and if it does occur, I have to protest that. I think the, before this kind of move would be made, first of all, I may offer my respect to Ms. Paul Maris, she's been thrown in the middle of a pretty serious little fight here, and this is not directed towards her. I believe, in short, that the original question, the validity of that election, Ms. Gardieri, should have been dealt with before this move was made, basically. And it's just very difficult, and I think the second move made by the Mayor, not by this Board, really cast a shadow. Again, that first question on the election should have been dealt with before this kind of move was made, so I hope the BOE can take my concerns here into consideration, to the extent that it can, although this decision, in most ways, was made on a level above it. Again, I protest any election of new officers tonight.
Thank you. Anyone else for public participation? Thank you very much. We can move on to the consent calendar. We have a motion, please, that the Board of Education approved the consent calendar, Exhibits 1801 through 1804 is recommended. So a move by Mr. Johnson, seconded. Seconded on Mr. Giannelli. Any discussion?
Yeah, I know there are a few.
Thanks, Rachel.
There are the minutes for the annual meeting, is it 1803? For Chairperson, it was Pat Johnson nominated, not David Trina, and for Secretary, it reads in favor of Gladys Cooper, it should have read in favor of Catherine Molinaro, and in favor of David Trina, it should have read in favor of Richard Hawley.
Any other discussion? Prove.
I don't need to be motioned for approval on the.
So do I have a motion to approve the corrections? Seconded. Please vote, approval. Ayes. Any abstain? No? Good. Donations.
Ms. Paul Maris.
I abstain. Someone abstain? Thank you. Donation, that the Board of Ed accepted $1,550 donation from area businesses and persons through the AIS Parents toward the Nature's Classroom Scholarship Fund. Also AIS Parent donation of $843.84 for the cost of two buses for the trip. So more informational only, I've got. Employee representations. AIS.
Questions are due to people at AIS this year, and we're spotlighting the AIS panel.
You guys want them? I didn't. Okay. Sure. Okay. I'm sure maybe.
My name is Christopher Roach, I'm the principal at AIS. Tonight, we have some staff members with us. Ooh, excuse me. Start off first by saying thank you for your service to the community, and I should also say my experience, I've had the opportunity to be a principal in Texas, Connecticut, Maine, Connecticut now again, and this is a tremendous school district. It's an absolute pleasure to come to work in the morning, and it's not like that everywhere. And that everybody has a staff waiting for them, I could speak from experience, as talented as the one that's sitting behind me, and I appreciate them more than they know.
Did you want him to stand upstairs?
I would like you to stand up at this time, please. We talked about this presentation, overcoming obstacles to ensure the success of all students. We know we're in tough budget times, and we have choices when there are budget cuts and budgets, and after budget decisions are made, we could either A, sit around and complain about it, or B, do what's right for kids, and we won't choose B because we're here for students. So we started setting some goals along the way, and essentially going down in grades three through five, we're looking to improve our aspect scores by approximately ten percent across all sub-populations as well as all students, both in math and ELA. Our high-needs group, which consists of economically disadvantaged, our special education and our ELO population, students is that high-needs subgroup as noted below, so we're looking to move that even more, that twenty-nine to fifty percent in the area of mathematics. ELA comparable goals, we're looking, again, we're here to effect positive change on students, we're here to move students forward, and we may have less staff, but we have even higher expectations for the staff that we have sitting behind us. All right, so what are we all about? I had the great pleasure of earning this position, getting this job, and you're walking into a great situation, tremendous people who inspired me to come to work in the morning, they're honest, they're open. I think you have that relationship in any organization where just be honest and upfront, tell us how it is, and it's a mutual conversation. We believe in mutual respect, we don't believe in excuses, there's a lot of excuses that can be made in any venue, we choose not to do that. We have a curriculum, we follow it, I think that's important. You invest in math investigations and teachers college reading and writing program, might as well use it, they're effective, it works, and part of that is small group instruction. So we're doing a lot of creative things that I'll get to in the slideshow, but the way to move students forward, in my view, in any venue, is to work with smaller groups. And you look at the data, you use the data, because data on paper tells a nice story, but nobody really knows what it is unless they actually use it, and we use it. So I think that's an important distinction between, you know, how most students work and how not to. Second slide. So let me just, we have a tremendous Spanish program at our school of Spanish language, which starts in kindergarten and goes all the way through grade five, and we have a collaborative period that consists of teachers, I think the original intent was to have a, I taught at San Antonio where they had a dual-language program, I think that was the initial intent, and we don't have that dual-language verbal articulation, so during that time, we had a teacher teaching the Spanish language and a general education teacher in the classroom, so rather than have the general education teacher assist with the behavior management or keeping students on task... or keeping students on task, they pull small groups from a neighboring teacher and work with students on areas of need. We're maximizing our human resources, and we have tremendous human resources. And I think what you can see here is the small groups being pulled, working on skills that they need to help them. Just gonna flip through quickly of, you can see some of our classrooms. Like that picture, a lot of happy kids? International Day of Peace celebration. This was awesome. Clearly Dr. Natasha's and his staff. They really did a great job bringing in Mr. Barrow, who is not only a brilliant musician, but also a great guy. And does a lot of great things. He's quite an altruist and he's inspiring. We did this in the beginning of the year, with all the students out there singing together, playing the guitar. It was a great time. This is our AIS Star Citizen. We want to recognize and acknowledge the great students that we have. I'm one in the middle. And so we take a picture each week of those students who are, who doesn't stand out things, or sort of a core value type award, but, you know, doing the things that may or may not get noticed on our report card. Kids love it, we have great conversations, they're excited about it, and they get a certificate to take home and probably goes up in their refrigerator. We do have a great garden program. We actually, the PTO just helped subsidize a master gardener. Ms. Dyer has been instrumental in this process of really getting this going with the composting, and it's been a team effort, obviously, for years. And the garden's starting to look a lot better, not right now because of the snow, but the master gardener did a great job of cleaning up a lot of weeds. And we have been composting since the start of the year. Our Apex Fun Run, parent involvement. Parents are out there having fun, running with students. The time for all. Grade two writing celebration, that was across all the grade two classroom. The Bridges of Peace and Hope Club. And it's at this time that I'm going to ask Meg McLean, if you could join me up here for a moment, please. Ms. McLean is also, she heads Odyssey of the Mind Up, and she runs this club, which is also our interventionist and a pretty special person.
Okay, so I have been involved for many years with John Farrell, working at an organization called Bridges of Peace and Hope, which tries to encourage different communities of schools all over the world to get together and collaborate and have a better understanding of each other and appreciate each other's differences and share collaboratively with artwork and music and writing and different projects. And we started talking as a group that it's really hard to try to build this into the school days with the children with everything that we need to try to accomplish. So we thought it might be fun to start a club at the school. And it's been very popular. It started last year. We are only taking fourth and fifth graders because all the kids want to do everything in this school, and we knew it would be big. And we have it for the second year this year, and there's 29 students. We run it, four adults supervise it from the school. And we encourage the kids to come up with projects on their own. And we all run different ideas by each other and do usually something local and something global. And I know Chris has pictures of several things, but our most recent project was the kids made scarves from fabric that was donated by singers to us. And we gave it to the Dorothy Day Hospitality House, and they were thrilled to give to some of the shuddings and homeless people. But our big, big project that we were working on last year and this year was to share the idea that kids all love play. And we have our own Gaga Pit at our school that is a really fun game the kids play, that they learn from nature's classroom experience. And we thought it would really be fun if we could share that game with somebody overseas that is less fortunate, maybe doesn't have so many opportunities. So we decided to share this game by writing a book, which we could pass around. The students made this book. It took us a long time collecting photographs and trying to explain it in a way to someone that has no idea how to do something, a game or whatever. And then we did several fundraisers, and then also the PTO helped support us financially so that we could pay to have this Gaga Pit actually built at the school, the La Quasie School in Zambia, Africa. And John Farrell, who is very closely related to us at our school, managed to take a trip over there and work with people in the community and build this Gaga Pit, and it's been a huge success. And we're really proud that we were able to accomplish this. And we're just gonna continue doing projects globally and vocally with the kids.
Okay, moving on, we're going to show a, Mr. Cavani said, brief presentation. Need access to the... We'll skip that. Okay, so Odyssey of the Mind, another great opportunity for kids collaboratively solving problems and working on student-type projects. We have parents who spearhead that. We have four teams this year who will go on to compete, hopefully for worlds, and we look forward to their success in the program. There's some pictures also of Odyssey of the Mind in the past. Grade the whole focus on data-driven solutions. This is a picture of second grade with our ELA coach, our Lass, along with our math specialist. And we're looking at data, we're looking at making the best decisions for students, we're looking at strengths, we're looking at weaknesses, and we're looking at how to provide small group instruction in a way to reach every single student. Doesn't matter where you start, but we're going to keep pushing you until you get there. And when I say "we," I mean all of us. Very important, we all work with small groups. I wish we had access to this one, sorry. Grade four trout raising and release at Westlake Reservoir, associated by fourth grade. And Ms. Woodruff, would you like to talk about this, or you'd like me to talk about it?
Oh, God.
All right. So there's the Westlake Reservoir, it looks like a beautiful reservoir. And they do raise the trout, and they release them, so it's a lot of fun.
It's through the State of Connecticut Trout in the Classroom Program.
Yeah, so we look forward to that this upcoming year.
And we released 214 trout last year.
Very nice, thank you. Mrs. Bosworth couldn't be with us, but she did share some really nice examples of the art program that she has in collaboration. Actually, it's an international project between Japan, Latvia, Gambia, and Mexico with our fourth or fifth graders, sharing some of their values, some of their importance to them via both the written word and their artwork, as you can see, your jet airplane to the right, the comfortable seats and the nice screen. In the middle, Statue of Liberty, great. And we also have our students to the left working on their art things project. And she does an incredible job for us in Morris Street. Fourth and fifth grade students under the guidance of staff volunteers and parents. This is a play that was put on. I know Ms. Woodruff was instrumental in that. Mr. Cavani says the actor to the right. Phenomenally well-done, is what I understand. I hope that we could do it time and time again, I'll be happy to be in it. This year, we started something that many schools have had, positive behavior intervention and support. And this is a framework for positive behavior. Instead of sitting there yelling into a microphone at students and they're not listening to a word you say, you try to approach it in a positive manner. So you incentivize the behaviors that you want to see versus the yelling at behaviors you don't wish to see. So we get tickets, and they're tickets that you do want to get, all right? And they go into a mailbox, and we do sort of a raffle, a drawing for prizes, and we did a few this morning. You may see, there they are. We hand out those little, I don't know what they are. We had students to the left over here who are actually calling out the names of these students who won the prizes for today. The more tickets you have in the mailbox, the more, the likelihood that you will win something of value. All right, so we have this really cool bus program. Bus 25, Bus 68, and Bus 75 have perfect scores. So we're working in conjunction with the transportation department, the drivers have taken this on. You can see Mr. Gus, Bus 75, very excited about the four, that he's a perfect scorer for all the way along. Ms. Pat, and also Bus 68, their happiest can be up here, which is great, that's what we want. You know, if you're doing well, you're scoring a four, that means you're doing quite well on the bus, or not dealing with discipline issues, everybody's happy. Mr. Cavani's, Mr. Martino and myself were working on, using the app that the district has of the GPS, and what we did, Mr. Cavani's just sent out sort of, you know, little reminders along the way. Bus arrived a little bit late today, just so parents can kind of keep track of, all right, I can expect my child to get this stop about 10 or 15 minutes late. Just think it's important to always keep everybody, you know, well-informed, particularly when you're dealing with young kids. Community time, we have a tremendous social worker and tremendous school psychologist, Mr. Grandl and Mrs. LaBastard. Again, it's not like that everywhere, but we're fortunate that we have tremendous staff in that capacity. And they were working on being a project with being good friends with the third graders up there. They have the whole reg level in our library. Mrs. LaBalle was also there, she does so many of the behind-the-scenes things that nobody knows about, but she does an incredible job at it. And getting all the third graders in there to, you know, work on citizenship, and they created hands with the ways that they can be good friends. Teachers and staff, I think, we talk about structured resets. The door doesn't open and the students run, you know, into the fence, into the walls. We play games. Mr. Hauser, actually, PE teacher took time, money out of his pocket and lined the fields for us, so that we have soccer, we have all kinds of games going on outside, staff interacting with kids. You see a sort of choo-choo train type game going on down here with one of our first-grade teachers, very exciting for the students. There was a video that went along with that, we chose not to show it. It was just loud. And then Ms. Teegarden, our nurse, who always keeps us honest about the temperatures and the wind chills, even though I want to get outside in a worse way, sometimes we do have to stay in, and we respect that, but we do keep a spreadsheet on the number of injuries, location of the injury activities and dates of the week that such injuries occurred. We contact parents, but it's important because it tells us, you know, what we can work on in terms of behavior. Our third grade teachers reached out to the Wisconsin student theater art majors, they came in and worked with our third graders, they did some work in the area of the theater, and that's in our amphitheater. The students had a great time, they enjoyed it. This is something we're starting right now, something I'm working on with students, with a student leadership team. We'll have our first meeting tomorrow. It sort of resembles the board meeting agenda. We have our own action items. Tomorrow's big one is approving the recess equipment. We've got everything from a dome to basketballs, and probably the basketballs are gonna be the extent of it, but no. We also have a recruiting video set up, and we're putting a little mural together for our bus. So we keep score of our buses. We want the kids to behave, and they get excited about it, let's do it. You know, coming up with theme dates, you know, we want the students to be invested, we want them to see whole democratic process, we want them to make decisions that are, you know, in the best interest of our school and have voice. I think that's important. Tomorrow, Mr. Cavani's and myself are going to invention convention training, it's gonna be exciting, we're going to do that at AIS this year. Mrs. Bosworth and Ms. McGuire will also be assisting with that endeavor, and appreciate their help. It's gonna be a great time. Some did you know, so we have a number of interns and student teachers this year that are absolutely incredible. Jenna Stilson, Asha, Megan, Elizabeth Castando, Miranda, our social work intern, people are phenomenal. They're worth their weight in gold because a lot of times you're in need of subs, you're in need of, you know, an extra pair of hands, an intervention in something, they're there, they're incredibly talented, and we thank them for everything they do. We also have staff that wait, 8:30 the door opens, reading intervention. It's pretty incredible. Mr. Cavani's and friends have an ice cream social each year for the whole school at the annual art show. Mrs. Teegarden, our school nurse, not your average school nurse, she's out there, out and about, walking club for students in the morning. Students are really excited, it's great to see, it's great to hear, I just wish she'd be a little bit lower on the temperature. Bridges of Peace and Hope Club that you just heard about, invention convention, did you ask this staff to go on above and beyond? There's no question that you couldn't ask more of the staff, short of giving blood. And they're doing everything you could ask for more, and I sincerely appreciate that. The small group that they're doing, they're pulling small groups, I'm pulling small groups in math, we're a team, all right? And I think when you function as a team, when you trust each other, when you're going above and beyond, you're gonna succeed at a level you have never succeeded at, hopefully. And that comes with, you know, trust and being a team. You guys have amazing concerts over the holidays. Ms. Cardillo behind us does a tremendous job with the students. Getting 60-something kindergarten nurses to perform is quite an accomplishment. They did a great job. We also, in the beginning of the year, we did a Red Cross fundraiser for the individuals in Texas who either lost homes or the homes were severely damaged due to the hurricanes and flood conditions. I believe that it's all had this evening. Does anybody have any questions? Thank you.
Student representations, please, Danbury High School. You have a few slides.
Yeah.
Matt, did you? You're still, or Chris, you're looking up.
Well, it's Matt, sorry, Matt. Yeah, just, pro-
Should I just close the whole thing out?
Yeah, try that.
It's under the phone cast on the- Not only the finance director, but also the IT supervisor. How's that?
There's some multitasking.
There we go.
Thank God.
Perfect.
Mr. Roach, what's the degrees? The objects, Mr. Cavani.
32.
Oh, it's freezing then.
Can't go out.
So, good evening, my name's La One of Marcelos. I'm the representative for the students at DHJES. So we're gonna keep it like short and sweet, because over the break, not too much happened, and it's only the beginning of January, so it's been pretty slow. But, yeah, it's just some holiday spirit that we have between the students and staff. So these are a lot of our teachers. We have a AOG Twitter account, and we ask people to like submit their best ugly sweaters or like best Christmas outfits. Yeah, people take it like really seriously. Especially the teachers, like they love it, to like be so into it, but they love it, it's really awesome. Go to the next one.
Shall we advance?
Yeah, so even the students take it seriously, like, I actually have a class with the guy who wore like the full-on Christmas suit, and he was so cool. But yeah, it was really great. And I previously spoke to the board about the project that we're doing with our veterans, and we got, I'm pretty sure, over 25 like boxes to send over to a military, like, to some troops stationed in Iraq. And yeah, that's the Merry Christmas boxes. And it's full of like food and just like the supplies that they said that they were needing. We finally finished like the rebranding for our new Patterson logo, so we're gonna initiate that pretty soon and have that be like a school-wide thing, because we know that our logos have been pretty like inconsistent. So it'll be really good to have that everywhere. And yeah, that's it.
So action items, election of Board of Education Officers. Do we have any motions on the floor? For Chair, let's start with Chair, excuse me. Any, uh, any, any motions for election of officers chairperson for the Board of Ed?
I nominate for-
Seconded by Mr. Jannelli. Any other nominations?
I nominate Pat Johnson.
Seconded by Mr. Holly. Any other nominations? We'll consider the nominations closed, we'll need to give if you could, that's the long. I guess so.
So just a reminder, you're going to write the person that you voted for, but also your own name because these are public documents.
Thank you. Thank you, sir.
Not that I don't trust him.
It's coming from Ken. Ken, a couple more forms, please. Thank you. Pass it on to Dr. Sale, if you could, please. Dr. Sale, pass it on to Dr. Sale, please. Yes, he did. Pass it to you. No questions? Yes? Two of the right girls.
Mike Clark had quite an outfit, didn't he?
Wasn't that cute?
I don't know, it's like cute, but it was an outfit.
Onesies, onesies are going to come back too.
So there are six votes in favor of Mr. Johnson for Chair, two, five votes for Mr. Brock. So Mr. Johnson is your new Chair.
Congratulations. Thank you. Can I have nominations, please, or motions for position of Vice Chair?
I nominate Mrs. Gladys Cooper.
I'm sorry.
He's got the lead.
Very cool. You have to cater that throne pretty quick. You're lucky you throw it down west. He's thrown it that far.
Alright, so we need to entertain a motion for Vice Chair.
I nominate Mrs. Gladys Cooper.
Cooper, seconded by Mr. Santos.
I'd like to make a motion for David Matrina. Seconded by Rachel.
Seconded by Rachel. This is the, uh, this is two, okay, I don't know. I'm named it close, I'm sorry.
Gladys.
Gladys. Cooper, please, bike.
The suit.
Suit. One time. You have to wear a jersey to wear it, though.
Yeah, I know.
Yeah, I took the wrong one here.
Did you? Because Patrick.
Okay, so there are six votes for Mr. Matrina for Vice Chair and five votes for Mrs. Cooper for Vice Chair. So Matrina is your new Vice Chair.
Okay, for Secretary, nominations on the floor?
I'd like to nominate Kathy Molinaro for Secretary.
I'll second.
And I'd like to nominate Rachel Chalesky.
Second. Okay, Molinaro nominated by Gladys Cooper. And seconded by Rachel Chalesky nominated by
Everybody turn and vote.
So we have six votes for Rachel Chalesky for Secretary and five votes for Kathy Molinaro. So Rachel Chalesky is the new Secretary.
Congratulations.
She's earned a change seat. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, moving along, Danbury High School complex project. Need a motion that the Board of Education authorizes the Chairperson of the Board of Education and the Superintendent of Schools to approve the final plans, contract specifications, and cost estimate for the Danbury High School furniture, fixtures, equipment, and technology. Phase six of the additions and alterations with safety improvements of the Danbury High School complex project. And sign the SCG 042 form and submit it to the State of Connecticut for approval.
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Molinaro. That, I think that's what it is, I think that's why, I think that's why Mr. Holly dumped on me. Any discussion? Any update from sites and facilities as far as everything's on track?
Everything is on track, it's the last phase, this is number six of six. And it's called the FFB package, which is the fixed furniture equipment. And they are contracting, it's, it's all done, it's going to the state as of with this motion. They anticipate no problems. They are very involved with the staff and principals at the high school for guidance, for selections, as well as the architect. Let's see, I don't know if they want to talk about that. That's about it, as far as the master sets. This is our final phase and it is on track. And they're sure it's going to go to us in the spring so that we can use it to support.
The, Dr. Stallow, a number of months ago, I think we had a nice presentation by Antonio. Maybe in the springtime it gets a little bit warmer and stuff because we have a new board member and construction.
We get a meeting up there.
Yeah.
Do we have heat up there yet?
Uh, we've got temp where it possibly was now.
Thank you, anybody, any other comments?
Thank you for allowing me. I'm so honored.
Come easy.
I've heard that before.
Okay, so, now that the benefit's done. All in, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstained?
I'm glad you didn't come through it because my, uh, my cousin was in there. For Dan Donovan, you know.
Well, has that worked out okay?
18, 19 budget, Mr. Fox was there, he's not here, but I appreciate him telling from the, from Danbury, from the town. We expect in two weeks, and tonight we'll have a full budget presentation. Tonight, everybody was there, so you're familiar, we have some goals to try to achieve in the new budget. We're trying to challenge whatever the budget's moving forward when you have limited resources, but we will be requesting money for enrollment improvements that we're having or expected. We have some facilities that we have to be concerned about, the middle school over at the West Side with the new modules. We have three, three schools that are in need of some differentiated staffing, that they're, do their nurses and support staff. We are doing a study, as you know, I mentioned at the meeting, on our transportation. We did one last year, we're trying to do another, as you know, we had to add some buses. One of the dynamics we have in Danbury, we have the Ninety program which moves kids out of their catchment areas that extends our runs, consequently, the overtime between runs. So that we can, so we can really safely transport youngsters and try to get these buses on a better schedule. Joe is working with SDA to have a study done and we'll look at start time, we'll look at, is it feasible? All this being said, we're hoping not to add any more buses.
Correct.
Otherwise, we may have to add buses, and we're trying to avoid that at all costs at this point. The next week, the two weeks will have more specificity. We can talk to the principals tomorrow and lay this out to them in terms of the general goals and what we're trying to achieve with, with the budget, which is our pathway to the programming for the district. ECS, a priority update, I don't know if you've received anything, but there is a budget formula that if implemented, we will, um, be rewarded for areas that we have been lobbying for. That is, our, our student enrollments regarding free reduced lunch, our liberal students and our sped students. We will have, they will be weighted so that Danbury does stand to receive more funds. When it's fully funded in 10 years, they expect.
Yeah.
I mean, I don't know who to believe on this stuff, right? The next year, if it comes to fruition, we do stand to receive some more money in this fund. The backdrop of this, the CGF case is still going on, and we don't know what's going to happen with that. So I think this is the state's attempt to make some adjustments in areas that CGF was paying some attention to regarding equity and access. So state tool. Priority, we're, just to announce, we've lost
$350,000.
$350,000 in that, in that we don't expect that to be returned to us. There are individuals in that, that we, our brands are really made up of salaries. They really are, so we're trying to figure out how to try to transition that into our operational budget at this point. Teacher focus group, that you may recall, I had the teachers come that, the day and, that evening and we've done a survey of the district, the survey, collected the survey. There was some interesting information on there. Teacher voice is an important thing for them, the more participatory in some of the activities. They'd like to see a little more pilot in some of the programming that we had. There were a lot of other recommendations, so what I've done, prior to that day, we just so happened to have a literacy committee meeting and it's represented the entire, mainly K5. And a lot of issues that came up in that, in that survey, what we call structured time during the day, how to implement our schedule, the challenges that presented them in terms of trying to deal with students and also trying to have a pacing of our curriculum so that kids are moving through it. There are things like that, there was PD support or professional development. So I moved all of that information to that group, so they received it all. And that, and there's about 20, 20 or 22 folks in that group and they're internalizing that information. I've worked with the union and we've been talking to them about it. Then we have a TDEC group, which is the advisory to the board, will be doing the presentation. I think that the, the takeaway that is very beneficial. I think we've seen some things that do the light that we should. And some of their recommendations, we can move some resources around. And the teachers that are looking at it, they're classroom teachers, so they get it, they have to implement it, you know, in terms of what really is actually happening. So a lot of that stuff is, I call it, being validated, some of it is being adjusted, some moves we can do now, some of it requires some budget reallocation. All know, I think it was a good process. So I think all of it turned up in a way that's really beneficial to us, so thank you. So, but I'll come back with some more information on that, just want to give you an update. Family Resource Center, if you want to, Dr. Me. Just a little sad, you could talk about the Nellie May too, I think there's two together there.
So in the budget cuts this year, we had to, we were asked to cut one of our family resource centers. So after much pondering and talking to some of the families and really looking at what was going to be best for everybody, we chose to close unfortunately the South Street School, FRC. With it being halfway between Worth Street, which has retained their FRC, and the Family Learning Center, Osborne Street, we were able to split up the families and still be able to give those services that we were running before, especially the home visits. We felt that was really imperative to grow with our children. And for many of the families, they have little babies, so they will partake in Worth's Family Resource Center playgroups, as well as the playgroups that are offered by the Family Learning Center. So the families are happy and will continue to support their students. On the other side, we had applied in December to the Nellie Mae Education Foundation out of Cambridge, Massachusetts for a grant. It was a fast turnaround, they decided in two weeks. So the grant was to look at educational disparities in New England for educational equity. And we wrote a proposal, I met with a couple of people, we turned around really, really- fast at the grant. They turned it around in less than two weeks' time, and we're notified that we did receive the grant. We had asked for two hundred and sixty-two thousand dollars. They came back, the verve and the depth of our grant and the intensity of the grant, and gave us two hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars. In speaking to the program manager at Nellie May, you know, I said to him, first I had to find ways to spend more money. And so I wanted to make sure that the deliverables were what they expected. It is not a donation grant. It is definitely really a research study. So I do have papers for you, a brief part of exactly what this grant is.
It's a great roadmap for the work that we're doing in the district. Really make us a lot more acute and knowledgeable of some of the issues that we're facing from the theoretical point of view and research. You have any more?
So what Nellie May was looking for, the goals of their proposal, is to create a deeper understanding of systemic and school local barriers that causes gaps in ultimately the college and career readiness of our students. They wanted to also identify interventions that address college and career readiness. And my work that I've done with Nellie May now since November two thousand and twelve, they've always been totally high school focused. And I remember saying to them about four years ago, we feel that, or at least those of us in the early childhood, so much starts in the community and at the early childhood age. Why focus all the time on high school? And so we're talking to Marcus from Nellie May. He said that really resonated with them and that they really, not that their work focus is going to change from high school, but an opportunity like this is really focusing on that community piece. And so the work that we do around this grant will be focused on the community. Their other goal was to help districts and communities collaborate on and coalesce around plans to reverse some historical patterns to ensure that all students graduate from high school. So they can say, well, why now? Why is this so important right now? We have a increasing need for highly educated people in the workforce. We have persistent gaps in college and career readiness among high school graduates that we want to explore further. More jobs requiring that second, post-secondary education. Most gaps are evident in certain subgroups. And when we talk about subgroups, it's not just our low-income, free and reduced lunch and special children that have special learning needs, but it can also be of our higher, more affluent student groups. There are significant segments of our students that are locked out of opportunities, so we want to see exactly why and how we can make it better for them. And the last why now is a racial equity approach, requires seeing differently, thinking differently, and doing our work differently. And that has been something that the board has supported and that the cabinet and everybody in the administration has, is taking that approach already, immediately reflecting on our own self behaviors and what we do as adults to affect students' learning. So the methods of this project will be that a project manager will be hired. It's already posted, and we have a couple resumes back already. We contracted with Minimalistic Equity Corporation. Part of the requirements for the grant is that we had to use a technical assistance provider to do some of this work. And so I looked at those that were in the New England area, and I always feel, and I'm sure many of you do, New England is kind of its own separate area in the United States. What happens in New England stays in New England. Some of the thought processes are exactly the same in New England. With my work on the National Board, I've done a lot of work with this group out of Philistine, Maryland, and I've always been really, really impressed with their level of thoroughness, their level of really digging down deep to get to root causes and things like that. So that was my first call to them. They were very excited to come on board, and so they'll be making a call in about two weeks to talk more about the grant, go to a full contractor with it. We've already shared some MOUs with them, and to really lay out the work plan, which was submitted already. This is, was a twelve-month grant. They've now moved it to fourteen months. So there's a lot of work to be done in a fairly short amount of time. We'll do it through community conversations, focus groups, community cafes that will involve everybody that touches the school, from our elderly population to administrators to our youth. The youth voice was very important for this grant, to board members, to teachers, to parents. Everybody that's in the community will be involved in this. So giving you this one cheat sheet here, I thought was really good because hopefully as board members, this could be kind of, kind of become the talk of the community. We've just recently, as a community group, submitted Working Cities, which is from the Boston Fed project, and we have interviewed next week in Hartford with them, and we will know on the twenty-fourth. That is also an equity grant to look at and to provide services around our ELO learners at a adult level, more opportunities for people to work, and the barriers of not enough childcare. And that childcare leads right to how well our children come prepared at kindergarten. So this is a very timely thing right now. Key deliverables to Nellie May will be a whole full report on what we found for the root clauses of inequities in education, and then to identify student-centered policies to address those inequities. We will be working on the district's equity policy, and we will, with the use of a consultant, develop student-centric interventions and strategies that address problems and conditions causing those disparity outcomes. So there will be things that will be brought back to the board that will need some work. Some work will go to the Policy Committee under Kim, and other pieces will go back to Nellie May. Other pieces will also go back to the teachers and to our Deputy Superintendent to be able to implement the school. You'll see that the collaboration is with our technical assistance provider, documentation of the process and reports of funding, thoughtful partnerships, and a lot of cross-district summits that Nellie May will put into place. And so we'll be sending teams to at least three convenings during the grant to see what else is going, similarities between the communities that are in this grant. They had about seventy, I believe, letters of intent. Fifteen grants put in. They wanted to take eight. They took six. So Nellie May has always been very intentional with what they do. They're very thorough. So it's a very exciting opportunity for them. I did on the back review some information on Nellie May and on the contractor that we'll work with. So we're excited about, and it'll be part that all of us in the community and for the schools will be engaged in as we go through this process. Questions? Yeah?
If you open fourteen months, as I understand, you're going to come up with a recommendation or a paper given to Nellie May. Is there a charge for that? You'll be receiving additional fundings or an additional grant?
This right now is to discover the root grant, the root clause of disparity in very simple conversations with them. I do believe they probably will then propose more funding. Their board, the Nellie May board, will propose more funding to be able to then issue RFP that will encourage districts to apply again for more implementation.
So for something that you have cited and feel you have to implement, that possibly could be funded, be given to us, be given to you as a fund?
Yes. We're hoping, we're hoping that, yes.
And will the director, what do you call it, report ready to you, the project manager?
Yes. Yes. Myself and I have.
Did I hear you by, you're closing one of your centers?
We did. We closed the Family Research Center.
I guess my next question is, how are you standing at the particular center? Would they be affected by that?
I know. I forgot to answer that. We actually already had a position that was open because of a resignation. So what we did was we held off on filling that position until it was clear to us that we weren't going to need, we weren't going to be able to fund that additional center. So there was no, what we did was we offered the split assignment to the remaining person, and she declined. So everybody was okay.
Before we move on, reach behind, pat yourself on the back. Anne has been going around, and she's been in Boston. She's been doing workshops. They've been calling her to do workshops. And I think it's helpful that you're out there doing that, and you brought a real respect to the collaboration, the work that you're doing in the community. I think that's why Nellie May came knocking on our door, because of your work.
Right.
And I want to say thank you because this is really a high-leverage activity for us because you mentioned, because if it's done right, they will look at funding a portion of it. And that's kind of thing in our budget that we really have always needed someone like that to do that. So I thank you greatly.
Thank you.
Question on your kindergarten registration.
Oh, yes.
Get on the air.
I have, okay. So kindergarten registration, we spent today and we'll spend the rest of tomorrow updating some new things, rearranging some furniture, and kindergarten registration begins next Tuesday morning at eight o'clock in the morning. We have sent out things to packets. We've shared posters at our home up at all childcare centers, the library. I've gone out to meet with several different groups. They're going to announce it. Our churches will be announcing it. And posters are going to my favorite place, the laundromats, because that's where people go to do their clothes and they see things. So we'll also do it to barber shops and hair salon. Can I mention about our community?
And also, the one-stop thing, I think is important for the board to hear.
Okay. So our Family and Community Engagement Center at forty-nine Montefiore Street, I would love to have our newer board members come down and see it. It is a one-stop shopping for Danbury. So families new to the community or just coming to register their children or find themselves in tough times at this point, come to the center. They're greeted by Tony, who is just wonderful. He's bilingual, and right behind him is, sorry, Emmanuel, is right behind him is Tatiana, who speaks Portuguese. So they're greeted in their native language. And so parents can come in. They can register for school. They do that. They go across the hallway, sign up for free and reduce lunch. And the person there is bilingual too, so that's really helped us to coalesce all of the language needs that we have. They go right down the hallway and sign up for before and after school at the same time. And then also in that building is our Family Learning Center and sites and facilities.
So they don't go to schools to register?
They don't. When they register, they are then given their child's screening date and the school's orientation date. If they are ELO learner, they're tested some right on site that day or given an appointment for that.
And I, this is, over the years, if parents are working, they don't have to come back another day. You know, we move in days where, and they have nine hours.
Yes.
As well. So I think a lot of things that we were hearing from parents in terms of, can you help us out? A lot of that Anne has, and Kim's help, have really organized the center to be able to do that. So that's been.
Can I just share the summer learning for everybody to put the date on their calendar? So Dr. South had said to us, let's get everybody together and figure out this summer learning thing, that every child in Danbury has a summer learning opportunity, whether they're a student that's on level or a student that needs more support. So we figured the easiest way to do that would be convene all of our summer learning providers together, which we did in October. Since then, they've come back and met with our curriculum people to look at alignment of curriculum and listen to the curriculum coordinators of what do students need to be successful in Danbury. And then the West Side Middle School did a morning breakfast, community breakfast, to try to coalesce together all the social service providers. And at that point, Danifres and myself and the group that was there, we said, let's all pull together. Dr. South was there. We moved the summer learning group in, or we joined them, in with the social emotional PPS staff. Since that time, Park and Rex has come and said, wait a minute. We all want to be part of this bigger picture. And so my assistant Tatiana is putting together a booklet that will be online, and it will list all the different summer providers, what's available, dates, times, money. And then we're working with those, the staff of middle schools up in the high schools. So that will be in one stop of where everybody will go. We have been very lucky that the Danbury Dome presents summer programming too. And so on the twenty-fourth of March, they have donated the dome to Danbury Public Schools and to all of us, all the service providers, to have a Family Resource Fair. We've had vendors come forward and said, we'll donate our services. It's just a twenty-five dollar fee for people who come and actually have a table at it. The dome will have all kinds of activities to do. They'll be able to do kindergarten registration right there. They'll be able to sign up for football and soccer, summer learning activities. So we're really trying to pull everybody together for a one big event for the needs of what the families need.
And for the, for the board's sake, we've offered that if there's a provider that needs space, I'm offering that they could come and do it within our school. The kids are there during their day, and so the parents and family aren't traveling and not going. So part of this situation is that if they need that, we would work with them as long as they're during the day when our programs are there, so we can cohabitate and make it convenient for families to have access. But so we have a lot of programs in Danbury. People don't have access, and they don't know. So we're trying to close that gap.
Right.
Opening libraries a couple days a week in the school so that children can come in and get more reading during the summer, for all their reading lists.
That's exciting.
Yeah, it is exciting.
Thank you.
I was just going to pile on what South had said about Anne. I had the great pleasure of joining her at a consortium meeting in Hartford where we were asked to talk about the face center. And I will tell you that Anne is just, she is someone who has been such highly regarded by her colleagues across the state, by members of the State Department of Education, and I could not even crowd her to be there with her and watching her represent this organization and the way that she has built this center to serve all of the members of our school community. And I just, I applaud what she has done. She's done a terrific job.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Okay. Discussion Board Committee Lists, PTO Liaison. We have. Oh, okay. And I don't know, we have, we just discussed that earlier today. Everybody, I think we need to re-discuss volunteers and whatnot for.
So I believe everyone has signed up except for Emanuela. If there's anyone else that wishes to move around, or if you have an extremely strong interest in a particular committee, then by all means, ask somebody else that's already sitting on the committee. Perhaps, you know, they've been on the committee for two or three years, perhaps they're interested in getting off. So by all means, just kind of an open discussion if anybody, you know, if anybody wants to be placed, you know, where, you know, within a particular committee.
Could I, could I just start? And I guess my question would be, are we chair, are we changing the chairperson of those committees that are already in place? Number one. Then number two, the superintendent of that was committed that I'm on. Since the chairperson is Mr. Johnson, I really need five people on that committee. So he's an ex-official, so I need one other person to join that committee.
Okay.
And Captain Bonn. So now we have five.
This, yeah, that's, oh, I thought that's what we were just discussing, the superintendent of that issue.
And at this point, I would like to set up a meeting for next Tuesday at six o'clock here, Evaluation Committee.
Next Tuesday at what time?
Next Tuesday at six o'clock. We will have light with questions. And I know everyone is going to feel cold and trying to get rid of some germs. I am too. So if that doesn't work, we'll look at another day. But right now, next Tuesday is good for everyone.
Next Tuesday.
Dr. South, yes?
Question. The Community Relations Committee looks like it has five members already that would be interested in serving that due to my background. Is there any other members who are currently sitting on?
I'll give, the Community Relations, I'll give up my seat because I put myself onto the.
the superintendent's evaluation.
Okay.
Oh, good work at the Kevin.
Sorry, I got carried away.
I wouldn't mind jumping onto the operation sites and facilities. Yeah, I was just gonna say, we're gonna need, so, okay, so, Fred, onto sites and facilities.
Chipless's question, are you keeping the same people on as chairpeople?
As everybody wants to stay on, if it's fine with me, I don't think anything to change that. Does it leave any chairs for, who's left to work?
No.
Yes, if we lost any chairs for all of this.
No.
Oh, you can.
We don't know, we don't know.
Fred, Fred is going on sites and facilities. Ms. Palmaras onto community relations and Kathy's going off. And Kathy's going onto superintendent evaluation. And I'm going off of the sites and facilities, Anne's superintendent.
And Patrick, in the spirit of this whole thing too, I know that every single board member has a right to have a one-on-one with the administration that they care to. That's not my point on this discussion. However, if a board member is asking for information, I think that it should be given to all when that information comes out. I know there are some board members who are asking for information from our administration and I don't want it to be a secret.
Okay. I wasn't aware of it, but.
But, you know, just want it to be given to all when that information goes out.
I don't see any issue with that. I think what, from on the board.
Mr. Chair, does the committee meeting here, is it here next Tuesday?
In the, usually in the front.
Yes.
Mr. Chair, I have one more question. Would it be possible for us to have two members on each of our negotiating teams in case somebody can't make the meeting or something? I know Mr. Carr has graciously donated some of his time and I would love for him to have a colleague certainly in the, for the non-teaching positions, we're gonna be doing secretaries and secretaries this spring, so it'd be nice to have two members if we could.
So do you, do we?
Take that on.
Okay. And now, did you need, you don't need anyone for teachers, we just, right?
I'm, I'm, I'm a volunteer, yep. I've got, I mean, I will have, we'll have both custodians and secretaries if you want to do one, if you're dying to get involved too, if you want to do one, if you're doing. They do, they tend to be somewhat time-consuming, so there will be at least three or four of these. Is that the one?
Oh, jump right in, Emmanuel.
Both feet.
Small negotiations, both feet. And small at the deep end.
Can I be added to the United School Trustees? I can get a spot for two.
Yep, yes.
Can I do that second?
Okay. Who's that?
And the city board building, there's usually just two people. It's usually, in the past, it has been from both parties, that's all. So whoever you want, they're back. Usually, I've served on it for a couple, several years.
As that, as being part of the operations sites, facilities and city board.
Kathy, the city committee you're talking on?
Yeah, the city.
I just got some of the city to add Rachel on.
Okay.
So it's gonna be you and Rachel.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Did you get that?
I'm sorry.
Rachel was on that.
The city, city building.
The city building.
Yep. That's on the council in February for adoption.
Okay. Mr. John. Yes, Kim, were you looking for two people on every one of the negotiations?
If I could, yeah.
And Manuela just signed up for which one did you?
For non-teaching.
Non-teaching. Okay, since I'm retired, I could be the alternate chairperson. I could do that before because of the time period.
Okay, so that's still under negotiations, non-teaching?
Yeah.
We'll have two different contracts. We'll have secretaries and custodians. So if you want to do one or one or two, that'll be great.
We have one this summer, right?
Just let me know, Kim, we can just.
Spring. Spring and then administrators in the summer.
The summer, yeah, the summer had the administrators.
Right there, well, sir.
Very nice.
Okay, great.
Okay.
Mr. Todd, so we're gonna be organizing an orientation for new board members.
Yes, I would have discussed that earlier, yeah.
Were you okay with the PTO assignments?
Yeah, I don't know what we have there, that was the next question.
There are a few vacancies on the PTO assignments.
On the, for the, what's that, for the citywide PTO?
No, the individual school PTOs.
Oh.
There's a second name.
List.
Another list, sir.
Ellsworth, Great Plains, Mill Ridge.
I'll do A's and I will come off of, square.
Shelter Rock.
I'll come off Shelter Rock. So we discuss.
I'll take Shelter Rock. It's all right?
No, it's.
Okay, do we have anybody for Mill Ridge Primary, Great Plains, Ellsworth?
You'll do Tuesday.
You have to do Great Plains.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Carr.
I can't do Tuesdays, I can do Mondays or Thursdays, so.
Do you wanna do Broadview, Rogers Park then?
I could. I'd love your opinion.
Because it's Thursday.
Okay, so, which one?
Broadview, place up around.
So we're gonna take Ms. Mollinero off of there.
And then you can put me into either Ellsworth for Great Plains taken or Mill Ridge.
Which, which is your preference?
Let's do Mill Ridge Primary.
Okay, do we have anybody for Ellsworth?
The problem is they're all on C J. They all have to go to every meeting, but you can't all.
I see there's some schools, there's two members, is that because there's like an alternate or, or just that it takes two people or?
Like every high school, we have Rachel and Amy.
We were just both interested, I guess. Okay.
Yeah, it's an interest, you can have more than one, we just try to at least have one representative on each PTO. But if somebody is really, you know, like.
I'd like to, Pat, you can get Morris Street.
Do you wanna do Ellsworth as well? And you know what, if you can't make it, let me know and I'll go fill in for you, because I'm doing one side.
Mr. Jannelli, can I pair up with you and Morris Street?
Sure. I don't mirror on Morris Street. I'll pair up with Mr. Hawley at Shelter.
And if someone wants to do South Street, I can come off South.
You touched it last.
All right. Okay, so here's what we have, Danbury High School, we have Chleski Spalina, Spalina. Well, the A school, Ms. Cooper, Broadview, Ms. Palmaras, Rogers Park, Ms. Mollinero, AIS, Mr. Matrina, Ms. Chleski, Ellsworth, Ms. Mollinero, Great Plains, Mr. Carratt, Hayestown, Mr. Hawley, King Street, Primary and Intermediate, Mr. Matrina, Mill Ridge, Ms. Mollinero, Morris Street, Mr. Jannelli and Ms. Palmaras, Park Avenue, Mr. Jannelli, Pembroke, Mr. Jannelli, Shelter Rock, Mr. Santos and Hawley, South Street, Ms. Cooper, Stadley-Ruff, Ms. Spalina, and West Side Middle School, Mr. Johnston.
Was there the citywide PTO?
Yes.
Yes, and that's on here. That is Ms. Chleski and Mr. Jannelli. Thank you.
Sam.
Yeah.
Okay, information.
Excuse me, Mr.?
Oh, yes, absolutely.
Could I, before we move on to information, I think it's very important that we set up a workshop, new board members, because I think we need to understand our roles and responsibilities, what we can and cannot do as board members.
Yep.
And number one, if that's going into the school, first you set up your appointment to the superintendent office, you just don't take a pay off and go visit the school. So I think we really need to set up an appointment, a date to come up with a workshop for a board meeting.
Do we have any suggestions?
I'm agreeing. Normally, we sit down at the cabinet, we have an orientation. Now, just in addition to that, I just wanna make sure I'm.
I'm believing, I believe that's what Ms. Cooper's talking about.
You know about the one that we do with our new board?
Yes, everyone comes to a workshop on responsibility, rules and responsibility.
Okay, so that, so now, there's gonna be an orientation for the new members.
Right, because what we do is sit down at the cabinet and then we talk to them about the day.
I think we were looking at the.
Tuesday.
Yeah, the Tuesday afternoon.
Right. Well, Debbie was gonna try to call everyone and see if they coordinated, but that's different now. So in addition to that, we have a workshop on general responsibilities.
We can't do that before the next meeting because there's already a finance.
No, I didn't mean to make, I think it needs to happen.
Yes, well, I think we should get to that relatively short order after maybe the first meeting in February?
Yes, uh-huh, yes.
How long do we think that that would take?
Workshop.
An hour, six, six o'clock before the first February meeting, which is February fourteenth.
Valentine.
February fourteenth, that's Valentine's Day.
Hasn't CAVE facilitated that meeting sometime?
We did have CAVE facilitated a workshop, I think it was this past year. We seem to carry Steve Price tag also on, anybody's sharing what you think. It was just that they brought in like a facilitator, right?
Yeah, we'll work it out. We'll work it out.
Okay, why don't we come up with something at the next meeting, we'll discuss, we'll settle by the date.
So we're talking about the fourteenth, it's, let's say, five forty-five, just so that we.
Do, is everybody okay with doing that on Valentine's Day, so?
Have a heart.
I'll bring a chocolate or something.
Doesn't have to be that.
No, no. One other day, then.
Pick another one. The next meeting after that is the twenty-eighth of February.
There you go.
Be warmer then, it'll be almost in March. All right, five, five forty-five on the twenty-eighth of February, two thousand and eighteen. That's gonna be before our regular meeting on Wednesday.
One thing I would ask, as you said, if there's something specifically you would like me to go over, as I, as I was planning the workshop, just get me a note, areas you want me to do, then I can, you'll help me plan the agenda. So I invite you to do that, so I can cover the areas that's on your mind.
So we, so we can get it, so we can get here at six forty-five.
Cooking that morning for your dinner.
That's right. After disparate information, also from this building committee, if you remember just before the holidays and after, they talked about Ellsworth Avenue and the debris that they thought was coming up through the ground.
Okay.
Do you remember that discussion?
I do not remember that. So, you know, what, I missed one meeting.
Was the playground outside that they couldn't, they couldn't grow any grass and the debris was coming up and, and so at our building committee, they, they had two studies, one in-house and one independent, that it's not coming up through that membrane that they had already put down.
Okay.
It's from people vandalizing in the back there.
Okay.
So, I wanted to make that very clear.
So we have no puncture, no toxins?
Nothing, no toxins coming through. And they will be putting down a synthetic surface, sixteen thousand five hundred square feet, they now cover.
Sixteen thousand five hundred square feet? What's that, like a, that's about a quarter acre?
But the city, the city is, the city was on it and they are in tune with it and so we don't.
Well, that's good for the kids here, that area. It's a women's area, they'll have somewhere.
It's a tech school, it's a space.
Joe, you had briefed us on that, if you want to ask. Now, did they, had they, someone, there was stuff coming up through Ellsworth? There's, there's.
There's been concern amongst the staff, there, there's been, in a sense, glass things coming up through the soil. When the site was initially done, there was a large study done with State, State of Connecticut, DEP. So there's actually a letter you'll find online of explaining it all to the residents, the neighboring, the neighboring areas, it was an ash, ash plant, I guess.
It was, it was an ash field.
Ash field that was dumped, a hole or whatever, through the hospital or something, the stories had pieced together. So when they did that, there was actually, there's actually a membrane underneath the ground that goes down, I believe, about six or eight feet underneath the whole entire school and the property. And we have to file with the state every quarter to make sure it hasn't been disturbed, been done in the property, all that kinda stuff. So the concern was, I think, that there was some fill that might have had some contaminants in it. I mean, you get fill, it's possible there was, there's, the city's obviously saying that they think there's some bottles that have been broken against the playground or around it from just people at night. So in this letter, it talked about the idea of encapsulating either through asphalt or through rubberized turf and exposed ground. So the city thought, we can't grow grass because there's so many kids playing on the playground, they wear it out in three seconds. So the city said the best way to do it was to basically put down a synthetic turf. It's about a two hundred thousand dollar job, I don't wanna underscore what, what's gonna happen there in the summer. So it's the best thing for the school, it's what needs to be done. It'll also probably be ADA compliant, I do think, which is another good thing. You only have one or two playgrounds around that are ADA compliant, so that'll be another plus.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Could I just make this announcement? On behalf of my church family, Hope Baptist Church, we are sponsoring our annual Dr. Martin Luther King program on Monday at nine o'clock, and I know that's kinda early, but we'll have, we'll feature our continental breakfast at nine o'clock, that begins. The program itself starts at ten, you will be out by eleven fifteen, because when I coordinate the program, I don't even go in the wrong way. We have Debra High School Jazz Band is coming, the youth from our church will be performing, and our guest speaker is a young man that has lived in Danbury for the last couple of years, and we're just happy that he accepted the engagement. So I don't have a lot of flyers, but if you're interested in coming, please get there early because people usually start coming in about eight-thirty. And they sit down, we have our continental breakfast and we go in and have it programmed. So I'm looking forward to seeing somebody there.
What's the, what's the address of the school?
The address is ten Dr. Anthony Samuel's Boulevard, and that's right across from City Hall, not right across from City Hall, but, oh, go right over Wigan Street, Wigan Street, go down two blocks, make a right and at the church, it's on the church on the street.
Who's the speaker?
The speaker is Andre Swanson, and he'll be there.
Is the gentleman that spoke at the liaison?
No, no, not him. We'll get him the next time.
Okay, anybody else?
So I have a question.
Sure.
Before the next meeting or whatever, if I go to a PTO meeting, I guess, that's okay, I can just walk in, I have my badge, and you have the various.
What, you mean you're a liaison? We'll send the list to all the principals.
Oh, good.
And they'll know that you're.
I don't think anybody would object if you wanted to go to a different PTO meeting, you know, it's basically open to public, the parents and teachers.
Go to another one, you can have.
If you wanted anyone, I mean, you can go to, I mean, I don't think anybody's going to ask for numbers.
Okay.
Very happy to see that, so we can get there.
Yeah.
All right. So, are we good now?
We're good now.
Perfect. All right, the board chairperson's report, I don't have a report. However, I did wanna make, I wanted to thank everybody for the honor of letting me serve on the board of Ed and now as the chair. I'd like to thank the rest of the board and welcome the new officers and the new people here. And I'd like to thank the previous officers who put their time in and did that. And I'd like to thank the public who came out and commented. I'd like to mention that the board has nearly never voted since I've been on it along party lines except at this time of year. And as we've discussed amongst ourselves beforehand, we wanna, you know, make sure that election time is done. we want to, you know, make sure that election time is done. And I hope that we can move back to, as we previously discussed, working with the business at hand for the betterment of the district and the people here. And we all have been along, as we seem to have done since, since very early in the meeting. So anyway, I just wanted to thank everybody for coming. And there's, the next step is board reports, communications and comments. Anything? Good there too? Nice, okay. So we're gonna need a motion to go into executive session. Move by Ms. Mullenaro, second by Mr. Santos. Thank you very much. So I gotta, I gotta, I gotta get them, there's six.